So, Dad, I'm willing to claim that you have work. Because then I'm not editing an ordinance.
Yeah, down on Kirby, huh?
Down on Kirby, oh my God. I had a good question about that in the review. I couldn't believe it. I think I told Karen, my grandmother lived in rural Kansas. And she was very independent. And until, we lived until 1969 and she had no running water, no electricity, and outside, at her house. When we went to visit our aunt, we were going to go up and spend time over there this summer. We got married in 68. When we get there, there's a tiny, little fancy house. Because it was because her favorite son, her baker, the time-honorable son-in-law was coming to visit. And we all have to work. So she had a brand new house. I think that's great, yeah.
I love that this is the start of our meeting on the recording.
Oh, I think we'll just pause it a little. It's good enough.
Welcome. Don't know how much time is spent while.
They probably didn't know that that was still allowable. That was shocking to me. Relatively, it's been.
The front warning.
We don't have a corner?
Yeah.
What, three, four?
Yeah, four, five.
Okay, yeah.
Right? What, oh, your alternate is missing.
Kim is sorry, I think you're stressed out.
Bill, did you say, when we did?
I'm not pretty for that sort of information.
Is he an alternate or?
No.
A regular alternate.
Okay, so the website is wrong.
He was originally nominated alternate because there was an error in the council and in the wording. So we couldn't appoint a full member. So we had to do it again.
Oh. It does seem like there should be a little bit more flexibility.
I'm not the bomb.
I know.
I have no comment.
The record is, the record is in here.
Did he come out?
Yeah, he opened it.
Morning.
No. You're looking at it like you're surprised as he is there.
Oh, no.
Evidence 2:30 now.
Man, it is 2:30 in my world.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
2:30, we will call the meeting of the ordinance revision committee for March 27th to the quarter. And we'll have a roll call. Yes, ma'am. Enter Chair Donna Hector.
Yes, ma'am.
Committee Member Karen Duncan.
I'm here.
Committee Member Jim Miller.
Here.
Committee Member Randy Renter.
Here.
Committee Member Joe Branko. And Alt Committee Member Emma Devonwell. Thank you. There appear to be no public comments, uh, at this time. Uh, we will approve the minutes of February 7th meeting. Are there any corrections? Corrections, uh, all approved. We'll have.
Do you need a motion? Do you need a motion?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Is there a motion or corrections?
Mm-hmm.
We need a second. One second. Thank you.
Uh, may I ask a question about, have you had reports of our recording not working? Are people not being able to get into them recently?
We had an issue with, uh, one and they were cooking on the long link.
Okay. Somebody's trying to watch right now and they're saying it's working, but that they were concerned because all the passwords seem to be the same in between meetings. So I'll just bring it up.
Take a picture of your agenda and agenda plan. Because the link is what we're having on the phone. That's the second one. That's the third report we've had. That's what she's got today with the template. Somehow we need to go to showing our template for our meeting when people initially click on, on link.
So they're not able to get in right now?
They're saying we can't get on Zoom.
They can't get on Zoom?
Correct.
Let me send them a picture of.
I just did. I just wanted you to know that I'm, people have been contacting me um, with complaints about not being able to get into our videos. So I didn't know if they'd ever reached out to y'all and apparently it's helping right now. So maybe not a problem we can solve right now, but as long as they're being recorded and posted later, that's good.
So vote on the, vote on the motion except the minutes.
Yes.
Committee Member Karen Duncan.
Yeah.
Committee Member Jim Miller.
Yes.
You want to be Jim or James? Jim is fine. Okay. Committee Member Randy Renter. Committee Member Joe Branko.
Here.
Thank you.
So they were on that consent of just approving the minutes from the last meeting.
I'm sorry.
So catching you off.
That's all right. But fortunately, I have conference calls sometimes where I can't get out of.
Yes, glad you're here. Glad you're here. Um, there's not a lot to report. Uh, we did, I believe, at the last meeting finish up our ordinances. Uh, you have in front of you a final copy that we did find one typo that we'll fix when we get to that point. Um, also, uh, from a overall viewpoint, Karen's going to do her presentation on health and sanitation. One of the things please notice is we, as she makes her presentation, we could, this would be a good template, if you will, as we approach other ordinances, a way to work it, uh, that we could do our work, present it to city council, let them do their special stuff, and, and make a little faster progress than we've been making. So just kind of note, not just the information that Karen's going to share, but the technique or whatever in the presentation. Um, I personally would like to make thank both Suzanne and Kevin for all the work they've done this last month with our free mess that's gone on. Uh, I think we're all proud of what our city has done to take care of that. Um, okay, so, um, does he make, okay.
On the basis, is to council, is Deborah, did you have anything else?
Yeah, we need to, yeah, I'm sorry, we need to go to Deborah next.
Oh, the only, we did report to council that you all in your last meeting spoke about the need for more specific direction moving forward rather than the like broader generalized overview of the code request. I provided that in the report. Um, I haven't submitted an agenda item about it as I was waiting for you all to elect the new chairperson, vice chair, all of that, to give me more direction on what kind of item you would like council to discuss. You know what I mean? So they've, they've heard your viewpoint. Um, so I'm just waiting on you all for more direction.
Thank you.
You're waiting on those.
Um, yeah, so today in your schedule, you have a vice chair, chairperson election. So that might change the dynamic of the committee as it sometimes can. And then you're wrapping up a big project hopefully today. So that might leave room for, you know, kind of what's next. So when you all have an idea of what's next, then I can submit a new item to council and, or if you would like, I can also submit an item to council now already for more specific direction as to what, where to start in the code or any specific ordinance to be in work on. Um, it's just kind of up to y'all. I'm here to serve at your pleasure. I'm not really, you know, I'll do what you ask.
Well, I thought we heard that we were supposed to work on things that council asked us to work on rather than the other way around.
That is accurate. And in the last meeting, there was a general consensus that maybe more specific direction from council would be appropriate because council's original motions were essentially for you all to do like a broad overview of the code, specifically looking at the structure of the code. And if you thought that that worked, um, there was a sheet of specific items to look at or not look at. Kind of the sheet was like, sort of like these areas have been touched. Um, you sort of moved past that and you all began work on this other document. And now on your agenda, you have some like deep dives going into some ordinances. So, um, I'm just, at this point, unclear what more information or direction you would like for council. I did submit, like I said in a report, the comments that you all would like more specific direction in the future. So it wasn't attached to an item, so council didn't discuss it.
Part of what I'm wondering is the agenda items that are on today's meeting, um, about health and sanitation.
I'm sorry, are you getting on your floor?
He's asking questions. Questions are allowed during reports. Well, I'll, I'll go to that. Part of the reason that the 156 items were meant, are on the agenda today was because they were, um, those topics were brought up in connection with, with something else.
I support y'all doing whatever you want.
So I thought we could just look at them, the short, fast, uh, things that we might just want to consider if they, if they need correction or if there's anything, uh, you know, we want to add.
They will need important orders.
To add, to add to my report to say on, on topic, hopefully, hopefully answer maybe Randy's concerns or questions because I'm kind of, I think I understand you. Uh, council has now started workshops every Tuesday after the council meetings where we're going to begin discussing procedural type stuff to try to maybe streamline some of these processes because there are so many new advisory boards, liaisons are new, we have new staff, new attorney, all these things. Um, one of the discussions that's being worked on right now is the flow of communication, how things move between the advisory boards and council, uh, and the council. So to your point and to your question, items could originate in this group and go to council for direction. They could. Council could send items directly to you. That is most primary function of this group is for council to say, this ordinance is strange, please look into it. Or we would really like citizen input on how this ordinance is working. Will you all look into it? If something originates from this body itself in your work naturally, absolutely, we will send that to council for consideration discussion. It's, that makes complete sense, so.
Is that helpful?
Somewhat.
Somewhat, okay. All right, all right. Um, Kevin, you're on.
Uh, I just want to report that I am online, so if anybody's having issues, um, keep trying because I know other people are online too. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, all right. So, um, at this point, I think we'll have our election. The officers will take effect.
Did the city chair have anything?
No, you, thank you, thank you, guys. Sorry about that. Okay, um, okay, with my, I'm working with my loose ones. I think the election is next, right? Well, I picked up my loose ones in the, or, oh. Okay, thank you. All right, um. We need both the chair and the vice chair, uh, for the ordinance review committee. And I will now entail nominations or engaged nominations for that, um, position.
So starting with the chair, I would like to nominate Jim as chair. And so second?
A second, yeah.
Okay, all in favor of Jim being our new chair?
You want to.
You have to set roll call. Yes, ma'am. All right. Committee Member Jim Miller. Okay. Committee Member Randy Renter.
Aye.
Committee Member Joe Branko.
Aye.
Enter Chair, uh, Donna Hector.
Yes, ma'am.
And Committee Member Karen Duncan.
Yes.
All right, are there any nominations for a vice chair?
Are there any willing people?
Or what does that entail?
It entails filling in when the chairman is absent and working with the chair, perhaps on the proposed agenda.
So basically what you're doing, you know, hers was a different circumstance. She's filling in like long term.
Right, you would only, if, if Jim was out sick, you would, you would run the meeting.
So he's running the meetings.
Correct.
And I would run them and say, I don't know how to run any of these meetings.
We'll help you out.
You don't have to.
It's not that hard.
I just like them running one.
We, we will help you. It's post. Yeah, it's really kind of a second in line.
All right, I nominate Joe Branko for vice chair.
A second. All right.
All righty.
We're waiting patiently.
Okay, ready to vote?
Yes.
Please call for a vote. All right, Committee Member Randy Renter.
Aye.
Committee Member Joe Branko.
Aye.
Vice Chair Donna Hector or Interim Chair Donna Hector.
Aye.
Committee Member Karen Duncan.
Yeah.
And Committee Member Jim Miller.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks for bringing the charge.
I, I would like to say this one thing is that when I first came on board and MO was chair, we agreed that this is a committee of cooperation and, and that our goal was to find, use common sense to do what we've been asked to do. And I think pretty much that's proven true and I hope y'all will, will see that that's what we've tried to do. So, um, I think we'll find lots of support in those of us that are here. So that's, that's the speech at this time. Okay, um, Karen, oh no, we need our unfinished business. You will find in your packet the important Wood Creek ordinances sheet.
We're going into workshop two.
Yes, I'm sorry. We're going into workshop now on, uh, finalizing their city ordinance sheet that we have taken a long time and a lot of effort to put together. Um, looking at it, we did find one small typo which I think can be easily added. Uh, a line was left out and as we move things around.
You can, uh.
Can we amend it?
No, no, I'm saying, he was elected chair.
Okay, so he takes over? Okay. Do you want?
You're running the meeting.
Or you want to, or you want me?
You are the chairman of the meeting.
You can let her finish.
You can let her finish it if you want.
Yeah, I'll let her finish it because that, that's fine. I don't even know what to change. That's fine.
Okay.
I didn't, I just want to give you that opportunity.
Okay, sorry about that. I didn't know what the procedure was.
I figured, I just wanted to.
Yeah, well, Jim knows I'm not trying to take away from you. Okay. Um, on, we're opening the workshop on completion of the important Wood Creek city ordinances sheet. Uh, we had gone over it time and time again. Um, so you have before you the final, final copy. The one thing that was left off, it was a typo type thing, is on parking under the third diamond there. Um, the sentence, long, it was on the original, on every original that we had. That's why it was somehow a typo that got erased. Long-term parking of these items, which are the motorhomes, are these, campers, jet skis, uh, inside fully enclosed garages or behind fencing on a durable surface is permitted. That sentence was somehow left off on the third diamond. If anybody needs a copy from the old, old.
So a trailer inside the garage?
Yes, is permitted when there, it's an enclosed garage.
Somehow, wouldn't this discuss that I'm going in the prior council meeting where if the door is open?
I don't know, listen.
Is that, is that a violation?
Finish the sentence.
If the door is open, the garage door is open and that becomes a violation?
No. No.
Okay.
What's in your garage is your thing.
Okay.
So, complete answer is not anymore because we changed the rule?
Yes.
Um, it was previously.
I remember the.
Was your business, or was it business?
It was previously a sizable offense to be able to see something against someone's garage.
It was.
Well, I will never open my garage again. That would be pretty, could prove very interesting in that the two new houses that are being built down the street have glass windows in the entire garage.
Simple, Eric.
Oh, really?
Might be so.
If you have a pretty line down the road.
Yeah, I didn't even notice. And the realtor too, I should have noticed.
I have numbers, Warren.
I see him in Austin a lot.
Oh, my gosh. My husband's, watch out. You want to see? That's what you'll see.
No, I've got, I've got a couple with my car over the park.
Oh.
Well, I'm comparing the, what I guess is the official text, which was in the handout.
Yes.
In the. Comparing that with Debra's, that she was putting that thing down, down in animal control, the bullet. Owner, owner handler will remove any dog excrement, that one. On Debra's at least, they had the words sanitarily removed.
You also took sanitarily, how you didn't like it.
Yeah.
That was intentional.
I think we took that. I would just figure they would know.
That's their fault.
All right, and then, and then another one is.
Yes, all right.
Oh, feeding duck, duck, feeding deer and or he's. On Debra's, it just has the word or not and or, so I wonder if that's intentional. It seems like or is adequate to name, just or.
The ordinance, my name's or, meaning deer, a piece, and.
I don't think it matters.
Uh, my asks were just what was made in the meeting. If changes have occurred on the document outside the meeting, I don't know, I didn't go in and verify it. Then with the, I mean, there's other changes too, but.
I, if, if it doesn't bother anybody, it doesn't bother my English grammar.
Yeah, I think we, and now, Deborah.
Oh, okay.
Additional items, but I think we just need to get them once and then council's going to be continually making ordinance changes and some of them may bubble up and need to have this modified.
Okay, so if that's okay, Randy will, he's a little bit handled.
There's one more thing I'd like to bring up and you may, I may be completely off the subject here. I'm sure someone will tell me. Underwater quality protection, there used to be, or excuse me, now it's an impervious.
Yes.
The second bullet, or there used to be a second bullet there that is applied to the ETJ. I understand it cannot be enforced in the ETJ. However, the ordinance does say specifically that it applies to the ETJ. We took that out though. Well, we didn't take it out of the resolution. My point is that it's in the resolution. So are we, is this an example of something we should take to council? That it's wrong in the resolution?
Yes, in the ordinance, yes. So the state law evolves all the time and our code may at times be part of alignment with state law. Um, you, you can manage water quality to some degree in the ETJ, which is why that chapter does that. But you cannot go in and tell somebody how much impervious coverage they can have in the ETJ, not without qualifiers. Like it has to be attached to something like steep slopes or drainage requirements from the county. Um, so that's why it was stripped from the document because it's misleading and the applicability of impervious coverage in the ETJ is limited at best. And so, yes, the ordinance likely needs to be addressed. There's other issues in that ordinance that I found as well.
Okay, so is that something that we should add to our agenda for some future thing or should we just let it go?
That is your call.
Okay, so I would say that since you brought it up, that would be something that we could put on our agenda for the future.
We can put, or we could put it as a note, I mean, impervious coverage section of what we're forwarding. Good note, uh, that we had removed the reference to the ETJ.
The note to, to, to the, to the, or it's, is.
Because it's unenforceable.
So, but I think the question then is the ordinance, we have to keep a list of the ordinances that are probable that have, as they can bubble up as problematic and then prioritize and figure out what to do. So, yes.
Part of that's a question, should we do that? But if we should, we should, we should do it.
Well, yeah, I think that goes back to what Deborah was saying about the communication between what we're going to do, how we want to operate our communication to council or from council, or maybe both ways.
Well, I think that's something we can even decide and I think it's a good suggestion.
I think that's a good one to start with.
When we come across an ordinance that is either enforceable in our view or maybe problematic, that would be up for the city attorney and the city manager. For the city council, but we can, we can refer.
All right, if you will look on the second page, which is really not a second page, it will be the last page. There are helpful information and emergency notification thing. We had talked a great deal about certain things we wanted to share with our community, an easy list. Well, we discovered that Suzanne had already, if you'll turn to page 10, those square boxes. Suzanne already had that. So in, in lieu of common sense, there was no reason to reinvent it. There is also, like, it was also set up on page 12 and 13 is another form. Um, I don't know, I personally think that the one on 10 and 11 are more practical. But that will be, we, we will also vote on which of these two that we want to attach to this eventually attach, gentlemen.
Um, can I pause for a second and go back up into your ordinance? There were two things removed from the, it, back up into the ordinances themselves on the document. There were two things removed from the tree trimming since the last meeting. One of them being, um, a no cause permit is required for all tree trimming. It used to say or removal. I would recommend that or removal, we put back in.
Put back in, okay. I don't, I don't recall that. All right, okay.
And then on the third bullet point, it's used to say, or sorry, there used to be an additional bullet point reminding people that they needed to, uh, paint live cuts, which, these are kind of key components for the city, specifically the live cuts is one of the main ways to avoid, oh, well.
Well, I think that we left that off because we're requiring a permit and on that permit, the instructions are very clear about painting and covering up the, when you trim or whatever. So I think we left that off because it was going to be on.
It wasn't struck in the last meeting, so we need to be very careful about changing documents. Well, content between meetings outside of the, the open, open forum and having the collective buy. Well, content between meetings outside of the, the open, open forum and having the collective body vote on changes, just okay. So if you want to keep that off there, that's.
Yeah.
Y'all's call collectively, but.
That's, that was what I, I was just remembering, I don't, I don't, I personally don't remember taking it off necessarily. I just thought that was what we discussed, but I don't know.
I do remember that. We, we discussed it, like in the event team event prior year.
Yeah. I don't. Um, I don't know. Well, this one, this copy still says the tree one must, must be painted. Do we want to put that back in? Do we, I mean, is that, I mean, if it's necessary or you think it would be helpful? Randy, what do you think?
I think it's adequate to have it in the permit.
In the permit, okay.
There are lots of things that are responsible in the permit.
Right, okay, yeah, anybody else? Everybody else agree or disagree or want to comment? Any other comments on that?
Yeah, I think having it in the permit.
Is sufficient, okay, all right, then we'll read it all. And then I just remembered that would be a, and, uh, okay, so, uh, so let's call or vote to approve with the correction on tree trimming. Uh, the second bullet to add or removal.
So we're getting out of work.
Okay, oh, yes, I'm sorry. All right, so we're going to move now into a decision page. Do we need to discuss the information sheet before we go because that's part of all of it or do we come back to it?
Um, the minutes from your last meeting, may I?
Yes.
We did, okay, so it's actually on page six of your packet, it's this bottom section. Um, vice chair Hector asked the members to select what additional information they would like to see on the back of the document and then what can fit. Um, vice chair Hector suggests Wood Creek City Hall website, email hours, address, emergency 911. The fact that there's no 311 contact in his county, non-emergency number for his county, nearest emergency room and number and here removal. City manager rules mentioned the useful links page on the sixth Wood Creek City website that has a lot of information already listed, that's page 12 and 13 in their fact packet. Uh, council rated on high extension that will be problematic for the city to recommend a private versus public emergency center. Members agreed to leave that information off of the document. Vice chair suggested that useful links on the website, city website statement included on the document, city Wood Creek information sheet was copied and presented. Chair Hector, she suggested minimizing it, placing on the sheet with dear removal information, manager rules of the useful links page will work to convert. Web page to an Adobe page and will accept suggestions for additions on the website. And then, uh, the last one, vice chair said she'll get the staff about contact information available and make a decision and include numbers for presentation to members. So this is just a presentation, y'all need to decide what you want on that.
Okay.
Document. And it can be part of the workshop, it's part of, it's part of the back.
Okay. My, my suggestion was to make this, the city of Wood Creek information sheet a separate sheet apart from our ordinance sheet. And to have it, it just have it available when people come in with this. Plus the fact that it's already on the website. The other one is the useful links is on the website, which pretty much is the same as this or a lot of the same information. So in.
So we're proposing that we have two separate documents.
Two separate documents, uh, available to citizens. Now, when the, if somebody new comes in, you can get them both. If somebody else comes in or make it available.
I can see it being just to have them, have them on a front and back of one page, one piece of paper, two, two pages on the front and back.
You already have a front and back.
Let's see on the ordinances, it takes up front and back.
Well, but there's a lot of error in that thing, something like that could be reused down to one page.
It is enough, we try.
So it would have to be its own piece anyway, no matter.
Yeah.
Which unless you shorten the, the important ordinances that are.
And if we make it into smaller, I think it'd be.
Bring them to the bottom, I might have learned less.
So. We can just focus on the ordinance sheet, pass it, leave the other available for the city staff, have available to hand out. Um, is they so deemed fit or we can put them, have them together.
I think we should just focus on the important.
Orders.
Uh, ordinances and let city staff handle the, uh.
The data?
Of the, of the data, because it, that's pretty much in the as needed, the on as needed thing.
So are you saying then this bottom quarter? It belongs to city staff to figure out what we want to do with it and based on the questions they get and the needs, people that log in? Or just leave it blank and let them figure it out?
What do you all want to see on the bottom?
I want whatever's most helpful to you.
I think we're, one of the main things we wanted was about the deer removal.
Yep.
So to me, this, the, the box at the bottom looks fine.
Yeah, helpful information and emergency notification, contact city.
Yeah, and then the rest of this.
Just make available as a call.
Whatever staff think is most useful, if people are calling again and staple them together and if they figure it out and they, you know, somebody said, no, I want that, whatever, however you want to do it. You work with the public when they walk in the door.
We don't have a frequent to ask questions, not yet, Teddy.
You do.
Yeah, we do, we do.
But I don't think the deer stuff along there.
Yeah.
And that's one of the most commonly things.
I see what you're saying, yeah. I mean, you can probably shout from next door, what we need to do to help.
Okay, uh, I, is there a motion that we, with the corrections that we've made? The small, uh, corrections that we've made today that we, uh, finalize the important city of Wood Creek ordinances? For publication.
I'll make a motion as stated.
My second is.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you restate?
I made a motion as stated.
Okay.
So are we in or out of, help me out, learning this, are we in or out of workshop?
We're out of, we're out of shocker coming to yours.
No, 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 I'm saying, do we, did you declare us out of work? I don't know how this works.
She, she, she came out of work, so she did the best. Thank you for.
I just did, I did hear.
It'll ask everything. When these on the website, I can, in this form or is it going to be?
It wasn't originally, that was a document that the previous city secretary and office administrator would email out.
Oh.
Um, or hand out, uh, when requested by the residents.
But it will be added on to the website along with, yeah, it'll be in a PDF form instead of a website form.
Sure.
And so you can just do the PDF, you know, print it out nice rather than that web like form that's printed on 13 or whatever, you know, it won't look like that anymore. You know, actual PDF with their logo on it and everything will, will make it look nice. We'll do a lot of editing to it.
Suzanne will call the question if you'll type about this earlier. Member Joe Brango?
Oh, I said, yes. Yeah, I, yes.
And our chair Donna Hector, yes. Community member Karen Duncan, yes. Newly elected chair Dan Miller.
I.
And community member Randy.
Yes.
Okay, um, we'll go into new business with Karen is a workshop on provision of health and sanitation.
So let me pass it up, I mean, she had, I mean, she requested.
Made a mistake of looking at something new and some potential changes and, um, not a whole bunch, but it's coming to you.
So, Randy.
I should clarify with the rule of the FAQ is about permits specifically, not a generalized all city business FAQ. And then there's the useful links page and there's a couple other pages that are like FQs.
Yeah, we need the.
You need to overlook all of the websites.
Yes.
So, if I understand more or less what this committee is about. Except for Jim editing the actual ordinance. My intention in reading this was as one of my bullet points on that previous document that we just approved was health and sanitation. Um, so we had discussed in the past, also looking at the full ordinance, making recommendations back to council from that list. And so that was one of my ordinances and that I started this way back in September. And then what we decided to do was to, um, complete that document so that we would have brought up and revisit some of the ordinances. Um, most of the people that were there, uh, making voting on that gone and so that's okay. But I had all this work and I wanted to get it out. Um, my intention is not to, unless something's horribly wrong with this, not to correct it, edit it, worry about it, but just to say, yes, there's enough evidence. To send it to our liaison to council or no, there's not enough evidence if there's anything wrong with this, this, um, particular ordinance. And this does not mean to come from us to our liaison to council. To me, that's just one of the two decisions. And, you know, um, so I started by looking at what sanitation means because some of the purposes seem really weird. And the way it was written seemed weird, um, there. There's a term that doesn't show up anyplace else. I rewrote and then I was surprised to not learn because I'm too much legal, legal stuff, that the term nuisance is actually a legal term in the state. So I looked at that and then more places I found the term public nuisance than just nuisance and then public health nuisance. So when you're dealing with sanitation, my personal as a former public health nurse sense would be the right term is public health nuisance, but that is not my decision. It's just a thought. I tried to rewrite the purpose to explain what all these things actually do, why they would be a public health nuisance. And that's because vermin roams, mosquitoes and other pests that may spread disease or destroy property then show up. Um, if they can accept that or not, I didn't, I don't know enough about private sewage treatment facilities, even though they're talking about. But also to say that the city promotes sanitation, public health safety, they don't need to worry about whatever. They can read it and like it or not like it, I don't care. Um, one of the things that in this ordinance that means makes absolutely no sense is some stuff about a fire safety buffer zone. I suggested that this whole section moved the site plan, um. I, I was just, I'm like, who in the world that's doing a building is gonna, yes ma'am?
That's in regards to the firework application.
Okay, but it's in health and sanitation, that I, I was confused. Okay, so in the definitions, this was just me, I had no idea until last year when we bought a condo. The chattel actually meant tangible personal property and I would just change that from chat to tangible personal property, so I'm like, um. And then there's differences in the definitions and I just put the examples in here between what, how rubbish is defined in public works and how it's defined in sanitation. And someone needs to decide whether it's to be an essential definition dictionary of definitions and they're all agreed on. Um, and the or, this, and I know this is kind of state wording, but I think the ordinance definition of nuisance sounds like porn. It's impure and unwholesome matter of any.
Yeah, I, I read that after you said that, I can't get it out of my mind.
Anyway, I, it just, I, I had spent a lot of hours on this and I'm like, what is, so there are better definitions of public health nuisance. Any condition with a potential to cause it from our pathogens infection or disease in any individual or the public in general. Think that makes a lot more sense than impure and unwholesome. I don't care, they can use it, it's from the state of Texas.
Well, it's very old.
It's very dated.
It's very dated.
Okay, so another thing that's dated is that this whole business about privies. Um, I have found somewhere, I found a city and I lost it that had, um, banned them, forbidden them, prohibited them inside the city limits. But, um, Texarkana had some stuff that, and other places I saw where zoning was used to prohibit them. I don't care how it's done, I just think we need to move past privies. Um, then there's just some language I would like to be changed if possible, rather than holds a place, just put filler drain, regulate any location. I have no idea on this next definition, um, then it goes into a whole, I go into a whole lot of stuff. That's both in health and sanitation and in construction and it's all better stated in construction. And I don't know why it's in two places and it's all different. So I did not go and look at the state for these things, I don't really, um, but, you know, some places in construction, you're supposed to take care of something daily. And this is all construction material, I mean, this makes us. Um, and then the portable toilets. Being present for construction, it's come out of sanitation because there's detail about it in construction. I didn't care, um, I didn't see anything in some of this, now I get into dangerous vegetation, um. So this is where I found something different and it kind of got me revisiting this and we already have it in. So other communities, um, have a different definition of dangerous vegetation and it's generally nine to 12 inches, more of them were at 12 inches. Um, in our definition, it talks about a driving hazard is, is very important to the definition. And so I couldn't care less if it's a driving hazard, whether it's a decorative glass grass or it's a weed. I mean, if you can't see, you can't see, and so, um, I just think that needs to be addressed. And then I wrote it, I've been for it. And then I learned from Deborah that six inches came from the parking strip and then the fire hazard, which makes sense to me if you're kind of hot, such a carriage. And there's grass in your parking strip, but it doesn't make any sense if it's other places. Um, and back to the fire bumper zone, um, I have no investigations I sort of gave by far except in one place because. That's all legal stuff that I have no clue about and just think it needs to be evaluated. Um, so then I had found my accident and this is truly accident, I was looking for something else. But I copied it in for Jim about, um, health inspection of private residence. And I, as a former public health nurse, I know that there are public health purposes for going into a private residence. But none of them are presented in the ordinance whatsoever. There is no rationale, except that we, there's a lawful opportunity to do that, but it doesn't say why. I mean, there's nothing about it and I would like somebody to visit that concern, either strike it out or add to the ordinance. What kinds of conditions might occur? That someone would need to visit a private residence, especially if there's not permission obtained from an adult occupant. So.
Well, it does say for a health ordinance or a political subdivision.
Yeah, but we don't have anybody qualified to go in. I mean, I can see the, the Hays County Health Department taking that on if there's a reason. I don't see the city, but that's a different discussion than that. The legal legal discussion, not mine. I mean, if, if it were, you thought somebody wasn't taking their TB medicine, I don't know. I mean, there are people assigned to do that for the county, but I have no idea.
But so you call an officer, they do well checks.
Well, that's, okay, that is not, okay, that's a wellness check. Is that what this is talking about?
Well, you were mentioning if somebody's taking their TB medicine, that's a well check.
No, that's TB control.
This, I think this more pertains to the lady that's got thirty cats inside her house.
But we don't have that. There's something that you do or don't do in the ordinance. That's the problem.
Right. So, yeah. To me, all of this falls under a well check. If you're checking on this sanitation of a home, that's a well check. Anytime staff is entering premises without explicit permission, an officer needs to be with them.
Okay, is that covered?
We do not, we do not enter office, we do not enter homes without permission. We never do that.
Okay.
We will, we will, we will.
Yeah, I'm, I'm uncomfortable if it's not explained, but the language is in the ordinance. So I mean, everything else is like, well, we do this, you know, you can't have.
For me, it's coming from a much bigger city. The language didn't make any sense to me either. Or like you're saying, it's vague, it's.
Well, this, I mean, there are very specific purposes for this ordinance and one of them is not what happens inside homes where someone is a cat holder. So anyway, okay, moving, I don't, oh, I'm doing the same. I'd like the council to address it. That's all I'm saying. So I'm not answering that. And then there's the statement in the ordinance that says dangerous vegetation may be evaded without notice. And I was really confused. And then I found the state by accident, the state rules around that. And actually, they're quite detailed and answer a lot of this. So what I think it probably should say is that there, when it's less than forty eight inches, which is what the abatement without notice, that it needs to go through this notification process and give the person an opportunity, just like for all these other offenses, but it doesn't say that at all. And then I got more confused about the lanes. And then it says this violation can be declared to be a nuisance. What difference does that make? It doesn't say what happens if you declare the nuisance. And then I was confused by the fines from the municipal court and civil penalties differ from the exact same across. So my question to the committee is, is there enough finding that this should go to the liaison to would then ask the council to address it? That's, it's kind of a, maybe that's the question. If anybody has any other thoughts, let me know.
So how would that work? What would that do if we sent it to council? Then they would have to go into the details of this and add, change, delete the text of the.
They could decide. So it kind of depends on what explicit direction you give me. If you say provide this in a report, send this to council, then I provide a report. If you give me direction to make it actionable, meaning like you're like, send this to council with this recommendation request, fill in the blank, that's different. Does that make sense? So when you just express interest in something, then that goes in a report to them. If you create an actionable item for me, providing me direction to take something specific to council with a specific plan of action afterwards. So that's up to you all, what you want to decide. Council, if this was actionable on their agenda, depending on what you want to see happen, would either say no or give it to the lawyer or city staff, or they could create an ad hoc work group, which is either one member of council or two members of council with maybe citizens who then work on drafting the ordinance. The last time we did something like this, you all made direct edits to the ordinance. And I wrote a draft of your edits and gave that to council for an actionable item. Council then made further edits to the ordinance together. We all did. I presented a second draft of the ordinance. That was really small ordinance. This is huge. This is gonna take some in-depth time. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's more questions here than there is statements or edits, if that makes sense. So it's kind of up to you all. What do you want to see? Just a report to council or do you want an actionable item where council is giving specific direction from you all and requests that y'all, that they do something?
Well, what we can do is we can go ahead and make the edits to the ordinance. Clearly showing what we've either taken out or what we've added in. And by next meeting, give you all a chance to, to look them over. And then by next meeting, give that to the liaison for actionable. She can then look at it, make the edits or whatever, and then submit it to to council. Cause as you said, they're gonna make changes as they choose anyway. But it, it, it at least gives our input.
In a different format.
Right.
So I, that's fine. I, the, the one caveat is I don't want to take on the, I'm not appropriate to take on the legal stuff, the penalties that are in here, my confusion about lanes.
You're not expected to. What we can do is, is any questions on it can be included.
Okay.
And she can pass that along, but at least we've had our look at it and had our input.
Okay, yeah. And that's, I know. That would also buy some time for people to digest this. And are you the editor? It looks like you're the editor.
Uh, just a proper procedure point. If you all want to work on things outside of meetings, max two of you can work on an item at a time. And submit changes, but changes have to happen in the open meeting, if this makes sense.
No, no. What I'm suggesting is make the edits, for example, that she, she's got an extensive list of edits. Put that, send the document that shows the edits. How and people can come next meeting with their suggestions.
Right.
Or their input.
Two of you can, can do that at a time, just two. You can't change people either. So you all could make a motion to create and your own ad hoc work group to work on the edits of health and sanitation and have two people say yes to doing that.
And then once you get that, you would have the document, you need to redline it on the original ordinance. You need to send that to me. And then we, the only, the first time that y'all get to see it is when we put out the packet.
Okay.
Because if you put it out, if, if she does some and, you know, she passes it around to everybody and y'all make edits and send it back to her. That's considered a form. So we gotta make sure that, you know, two of you work on it or one of you work on it. Send it to me. We'll have to get it in the packet and then that's, that's when y'all get it. So you have hopefully ten days before the, the meeting to look over it and, and make any corrections. And it can be, you know, a couple of times that y'all make corrections on it or.
Right. Technically, that's what I was suggesting is I'd get with her edits. And then that document will go out. So ten days before our next meeting, everybody would get a copy of that correct.
And then we also missed the things not addressed, like lanes, the penalties.
And you can go into, go to a workshop and talk about all of those things.
So just so you know, I will be on an airplane the next weekend going to look for the world's smallest hummingbird. I will be here next month to be humbled.
Okay.
So I, I hope I flagged it.
So a motion would be needed to ask Mr. Chairperson Miller to work on a draft redlined version of health and sanitation incorporating hearing notes.
Okay, so.
Karen, do you want to make that motion?
I'm just looking at what it says, discuss and take final action on the revised health and sanitation. So this is not the requirement. These are proposed provisions to health and sanitation. So when we come out of workshop, my motion would be that James and I collaborate on getting.
An edited version.
Yeah, let's do that. We're sharing documents. You're working on that. I'm not good at that.
All right. So is there any more discussion or questions to ask Karen about her presentation? About anything else?
I'm just curious, how many pages long is the sanitation?
Six.
And then your.
Six.
And then your packet with small font.
It's not long, but it dealt with the legal issues.
Karen's definitely afraid of it.
Well, and one of the things that's jumped out at me was the, the notification they give seven days from, you know, to send. And I'm sorry, if you mail something in our post office, you are not here to get it in seven days. So that doesn't give a, so I think to me, that's an issue, that was something that jumped out.
When you, when you mail it in seven days, you have to certify mail it. And then that's with a set of days. And you, cause you can't just say, oh, I mailed it. You have to have proof on the day that you mailed it. So there are legal stuff that you, there, yeah, there's a lot more involved than just sitting. Putting, sticking a stamp on there, putting it in.
Okay, all right, all right. Uh, any more discussion? Okay, let's move into the action and we need a motion. We've come out of workshop now. We need, we're gonna take, uh, not final action, but we're going to take some action on what we need to do next. So Karen, do you want to make?
Redline, green, the ordinance as it exists today with these recommendations embedded as well as a set of questions that support it to go to the liaison and be sent to council. You said it. Okay.
Yes. To, 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 to be sent to the city manager for our next agenda.
To be sent to the city manager for next month's agenda.
So that everyone can input as to any changes they have. And at that meeting, we'll finalize the document and send it off.
Okay.
So you want to restate that a little more.
He said it better. Okay, so well, there will be a, a redline version with additional questions of city manager. Seven, ten days I have, or did you?
Yeah, we'll have the agenda ten days ahead.
Okay, ten days prior to the next meeting. And it will be placed on the next month's agenda.
Right. For finalizing, if anyone's input and finalizing, you give the list. Second that.
Oh, I'll second it. The redline version with recommendations is to be sent to the city manager ten days prior to the next meeting to be included on the next packet, our next agenda.
And packet, both.
To be read and finalized, is that what that means? That's kind of what I heard.
That's would be the goal. Yeah, sounds good. I'll be there. I'll be happy to listen. Someone can, we all need, it's done.
Remember, Deacon made the motion and remember, Don Hector made the second. This chair, Joe Branca?
Do I say?
Yes.
Second?
Remember, Don Hector?
Aye.
Remember, Karen Deacon?
Aye.
Chair, Jim Miller?
Aye.
And number, Andy Renter?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Yeah.
All right. Now. I hope to be through that folder. All right, let's open the workshop. There are three ordinances listed. Uh, these came up as not for personal care facilities. That was one that was, uh, kind of in connection with some of these that came up. Do we have to do them in order to list them?
Yeah.
No. Okay, I'm off first. Let's look at the personal care facilities. It's on. Cause I think it's the quickest thing that they. That we can look at. Has everybody had a time, a chance to read it?
I don't. Can you tell me why we have for the penitence?
Well, uh, because it's in there and it was part of the, it just came up and it was something that I'm familiar with. And I had a friend who did this and it is a state, there are state requirements.
Correct.
But the one of the, what, the only thing on it that bothered me was at the very bottom, C, number three. It says a personal care, it's, it is. My friend could not find a place for her twenty year old physically and mentally handicapped daughter.
Okay.
And so they sold their house to a company that provides personal care facilities. And there were other, you know, so that it was a group home, basically. Worked very well, was wonderful. But my concern, and, and all of this is pretty much from, and I understand state law. So there's not a lot of changes that we can make. But one of the things that I, that struck me as I read it was number three. Personal care facility must have at least two paid staff member or have one paid on duty twenty-four hours a day, one supervisor for each of six residents. Well, I, I find what?
Go ahead.
I just think, I, I don't, you can't change them, but I would like to change it up. I would like to say two paid staff members on duty and, and one supervisor for five residents.
So I.
I'm just wondering if you do that.
Find, this thing seems to belong together, stuff about assisted living. There's something called residential care. There's something called personal care. It, this care facility for a type B facility, when I typed that in, assisted living only still cash, which is a different license.
Chairman. Yes, yes ma'am. The, the reason this, these items came up is because it was originally on, really important with the ordinance. On, um, home, under residential businesses on the second page. Again, that's why. It's just been my recent experience and, and I don't know if this helps. There was a twelve year old at my school who had mental issues and he pushed over a piano and up rock piano and threw a teacher's desk across the room. Took five guys to bring him down to get him. And so the fact that you have one paid staff member, if you've got fifteen people there is probably not enough. And so I was thinking that if we had one of these homes in our residential areas that we really needed more staffing required. Now I know this, you know, we have the state law, but can we make it better?
Does this read that we would have to allow it?
Yes.
If someone wanted to.
Yes.
On this street, create a facility.
Yes.
Even though it was designed as a single family home?
Yes. That's what it says. It is with my understanding. Now it has to have certain speci, the specifications are very clear. You have to have so many per square feet per person, uh, for sleeping purposes and for living purposes. So it's very specific and you might not have, you can't have more than fifteen. You might not have all five.
What about in-home care for a single person? What about in-home care for a single person?
I'm not even sure this is accurate, I wouldn't start with that presumption.
You don't think so?
I've got, it talks about the structure has to have nursing home, need nursing home codes for fire and safety. Couldn't find that same statement anywhere about residential care. And I couldn't, I mean, I, probably true for assisted living, but those are different licenses. And there's an A and a B type care facilities, and I think it's along those together.
Okay.
So I don't know, I mean, if we're going there, let's go.
Okay, I just read this, I just read this.
A little bird said to me, do not assume when you read our ordinances, that they align with current Texas code.
Okay, so then we need to do some more exploring to find out what.
If we're gonna address it.
Okay.
But I found three, I found references and I did a cross lock in to three different kinds of licensed facilities. In this one page.
Okay, so we just need to do more to that.
If we're gonna address it.
Okay.
So you want to keep it on the list, go for it.
Alright, so let's postpone this question on this, if everybody has the chance to look. Joe, you may have resources that we don't, being in the real estate business, but, you know, anyway, maybe.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I. I haven't, that's not something we have to learn, our continuing education, but um. That would probably fall somewhere.
And maybe it's.
Section of real estate.
Maybe it's not, maybe it's not as big an issue, I mean, it's, okay, so we will table that.
I, yeah, I find, I find it hard to believe someone could up and create this facility anywhere in Wood Creek. Because wouldn't you run into zoning restriction, just. That's what I would think.
I can speak to that technically because of, I mean, it cites at the top of it. You can't discriminate against how the handicapped or elderly, and given. Like what it outlines here, that's why this is in there, essentially if somebody is needing assisted living in their home.
That's different.
Right, but that's, that's what she's saying, is that this actually blends three different things together. And there, we don't have any rules about having to be related to live together, you actually can't really create rules like that, so. Somebody could start renting out rooms in their home for other elderly people and have a full-time. Staff person taking care of people, and so what the city is trying to do is regulate health and safety. In the event that that should occur, the state says certain things have to be in place, it's like a daycare. I can decide to start watching children in my home, and the state says, okay, that's fine, that's a use of a home. But you have to follow these safety precautions, so that's what this is.
That's in the license.
Yeah, I had a, in Arizona, I had a, my mother had a cousin, a very elderly cousin that lived in a woman's home. And there were four other elderly women that she took care of, and I'm sure under the Arizona licensing requirements. But it's like this, like the Texas, social services, department of aging and disability is different than nursing home.
Okay, so we have some conflict there, so we need to.
Well, there may, I'm seeing a potential conflict.
Okay.
So maybe he's talked about a type A and he's talked about a type B, whatever.
So maybe we need to, we need to investigate more to see, and maybe it's, you know, but it is one of our orders. We need to, again, common sense, figure it out.
It's a very easy, maybe to find which type of facility you're talking about that's allowed, because as. New Chair Person Miller highlighted, when you are talking about a commercial facility that's taking in large amounts of people. It does very different than somebody caring for a smaller group of elders.
And it would require restructuring, the edifice, which would then need to run into zoning. Problems.
Right, so this, it does need to be updated as far as I can go.
Okay. I would take with concern in that work review. Okay, all right, which one next that we'd like to look at?
Well, I think the two, the two are related. Question is the difference between home occupation and. Business use, because when this first surfaced, when it was on the important ordinances. I always had the understanding that under business use, the listing occupants. Would also apply to home. Right, home, home occupation, and I don't think it does, I think that clause. Business use requirements. Applies only to that zoning in the city that allows for business use. And currently, we only have one lot. In, in the whole city that allows that. So the, the first thing I would suggest is we take out that the city is divided into six business districts. They don't exist. There are no six business.
That is, that was my big question part of that here to begin with.
And we need clarification that the rent, for example, it says office under. Part B, section one, where it lists all these occupants. These, we need clarification that the, this doesn't apply to home occupancy. I mean, obviously you don't want a dentist setting up a home, home office. So if one five six point oh six one and one five six point zero eight zero. Applied to different things, then. I'm not too bad with, if the first one's on my.
Well, the, one of the things that I saw on the home occupation, on, on letter C. Was it says the occupation you should be carried on solely by a member, member of members of the family residing on the premises. My previous tax person, it was her business, but she had two assistants that worked in her house. So that would not.
That would, that would be a violation of that home occupation, so, but again, we need clarification that. That the two clauses applied to different things, that you cannot set up a dentist office. On Wood Creek Drive.
So, I'm not just. How do you think, what, what should we do, or really do we think we should combine these two things? Or still keep them separate and just have them. Amplify or explain the other.
Well, I think one five six point zero eight zero could clarify that it only applies to. Zones, the, the, the business zone.
So are you thinking of. Then creating an edit? For that, and then getting it looked at next month and sending it? That simple, just to create a, a, an introduction or something, an edit, that the rest?
Correct, let me ask you. Yes, do, do you believe that they? That the home occupation, that that one five six point zero eight zero does not apply to home occupation? I'd have to read the entire, I'd have to read it a little bit more. Yeah.
It sounds to me like, say if I decided to start. An, an accounting business out of my home, then I can do that, because occupation, this doesn't mean. And if sort of since I live in the home, I'm going, and live and own in the home that I'm gonna start the business in. Then that would be okay, but I, I think what it says home occupation is, it's referring to business instead of.
If you don't need to look into it, I could, if you.
You can.
Clear our stuff in, in my city manager report next meeting. Yeah, the, the home occupation clause doesn't specify occupants.
Do we know what cultural?
Which, which is fine, you wanted that, so under this, you would be able to do that. What you couldn't do is create an office with employee in there. And what we want to make sure is that the, the. Professions listed on the business use, that that doesn't automatically apply, that that's not, someone can't point to that. I mean, if someone wants to set up a dentist office under a home occupancy. They couldn't, they wouldn't be able to, but I don't want them to say, well, here's a competing clause. Cause it says we can set up a dentist office, so I think this needs to be clarified, that it only applies. When the, when it's zoned for business use.
Right, so the issue you have here starts with the state, that the city is divided into six business districts. Because it doesn't tell you where those districts are, and there's no implication of where they aren't either. So right there, you have a huge liability because somebody could argue, I'm in a business district anywhere in the city, because it says the city. Business districts.
Right.
So, right, so pertaining to your question, are these two exclusive? From like just a general standpoint, of course they are, they are very different uses. Does our, our code actually make them exclusive? No, it doesn't, and if you look at the code. About home office, it doesn't necessarily say you couldn't have a dentist's office, because if I'm the dentist. And I'm operating it. That would still, with these weird guidelines, maybe be allowable, so. Yeah, I don't think they're necessarily separate, I think there needs to be editing to better define. What these things mean, what a home office actually is, and maybe make those uses very specific. And then you don't have to say all the other things that can happen, if you just talk about what's actually allowed and you strike this. Concept of business districts, and then. The, the only thing I'm gonna add to it is the concept of Wood Creek might not always look like it does on that map right there, right?
I understand.
So when looking at the business. Idea, they should be zone commercial or mixed use, that would be more typical. And then that would handle the issues of the rest of this, right?
I, I understand the need for a business use, even though we only have the one location, because of. The ETJ gets annexed in or of some sort, and we have, we actually have those. So I understand that. But again, I would suggest that we make it clear that. First off, we take out the, the, the first sentence, and then we make it clear that this applies when it's zoned for business use.
Well, and honestly, if it's a tourney of Wood Creek and what color, somebody ran an art gallery, it was coming this last weekend. And, you know, you talked about professional office services in a home, and then. Lots of people do tailoring in their home and dressmaking, I mean, that's pretty normal, and then. Here it says you can't, I know people that have more crafting. Product in their house than furniture, and this is, no storage of merchandise on the property, I mean, if you're a dressmaker. You're gonna fabric in the house, so, I don't know, I think it's, it's kind of like this, I mean, it needs a lot of work. And. I don't know. And this whole thing, these both confuse me, and I also want to know what an ultra hazardous risk is versus the hazardous risk versus the risk.
What, what's the business district? You know what the liquor store is? Not, not the pro lane, but the golf courses, that's their own property.
It's recreational, and I'm not sure, is that done business district, is that? Or is it commercial, I'm sorry?
The, the liquor store. It's an M something, isn't it?
Multi-use, NC.
No.
Neighborhood. Commercial.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood commercial.
Yeah, it does say NC on this, that.
What NC is, it defines it, that's a type of zoning here, this is what I'm saying, is we don't.
We don't have it in, in a zoning.
Currently.
At least, so that, what is it, that being wouldn't even apply to any of our codes. And then the, and it looks, I mean, just kind of reading this, the home occupational criteria, or the home occupational. That is if you're in some other district other than the. In, NC, so let's say I'm on the SF one or, or whatever, that's when the. Home occupation criteria would come to effect, as if I was in the, in. The NC, then the business use requirement and limitation would come to effect.
So that needs to be put in both those sections where they apply.
So what we were saying though is that even under home occupation, some of the undesired uses are not explicitly prohibited. Because they kind of fit in there, so my recommendation would be more explicit about what is allowed, right? Saying these are the things that are allowed, no, all other uses are considered commercial, and then changing.
I think you get, that's a legal argument, but I don't know. Limiting what you consider as business. In that, we might run into this very long.
Well, we can also look at other cities they're doing, but other cities have zoning that is residential, you can run home offices. It clarifies what home offices can include, what type of services are allowed, and then it says all others are not. And then it goes into different kinds of zoning, mixed use, which is where you will have a mix of residential and commercial, which would be. Relevant in Wood Creek, and then.
Just the SF four, or, or just kind of the residential, I mean.
Right.
That's what you often do whatever.
No, but, so what I'm saying is, right now our code says things exist that don't exist, the city's not divided into business districts.
Correct, yeah.
However, Wood Creek might not always remain Wood Creek as we see it on that map. What I'm saying is, my recommendation is to follow what other cities do, which is create zoning that is clearly commercial. Clearly mixed use, instead of.
But that wouldn't be in this, in this paragraph, this paragraph will just define business use in zones that are permitted.
It defines what these zones, zones are and what they allow.
So do we need, I'm really.
This is the, this is the only business district right here, everything else is zone different. So if somebody wanted to be zone business or whatever, they would have to go through a zoning change.
But it's not even a business district.
This is a.
Neighborhood commercial, NC.
Neighborhood commercial, which is the NC, which we don't have a neighborhood business. So in order to get a neighborhood business, you would have to rezone it, and we would have to. Someone probably copied the clause from another city, it was in there or something. Yeah.
And then updated twenty nineteen, it doesn't show what the updates are, but I'm guessing it originates from two thousand and five. And it is likely a, like a template draft from just any old city, Texas.
Well, I. I suggest that we, again, table that till next meeting, but at next meeting, make a definite decision on. Sending it up to council, either just with questions or, or with some recommendations. I don't think we're in a position to rewrite that.
That's the, dot O A O is the one you're saying?
O A O is, is the one I'm.
Okay, so what about O six one?
We can make, if anyone, at the next meeting, if anyone wants to make any changes to that or recommendations on that, we can.
Alright, so we're tabling these two until the next meeting, if people time to.
Well, we, well, we go out of workshop.
Oh yeah, now we have to go out of workshop, so. We're at a workshop, we're discussing what the action we're going to take and that is table the three ordinances. One fifty-six, uh, oh sixty-one, oh sixty-five, and then one eight, oh, oh eight oh, until next, next session.
Right, now that everyone has to understand the.
What we.
The issues.
Um. Okay, any other announcements?
Do we need to vote on that motion or?
I think we have.
Table it in.
Yes, you have to vote on how anything will say.
All right.
Is it tabled or determined?
You have to make a motion table. Tableting means it comes up at the next meeting. Automatically, or you can make a motion to postpone and set a date. If you don't set a date, then it comes back automatically and I think in three months.
I make a motion to table it till in that meeting. Those three clauses. At which time we'll make a recommendation.
A second motion. Are there any announcements?
Yes, yes.
Oh, we have. All right. What's your name on?
You need to want to get out of here.
No, I, I, I know both of other things. So.
All right.
I will call for the, call for the vote.
Member Donna Hector?
Yes.
Member Karen Duncan?
Yes. You have to randomly spur them up?
Yeah, uh, I just, I had a brain thought real quick. I'll come back. Um, member Randy Renter?
Aye.
And, uh. Vice Chair Joe Branca?
Aye.
Now it's chair, now that he is chair.
Yeah.
They all vote.
Everybody votes. You said.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so. Now, the meeting is.
Suzanne, um, issue is that your packets have two different meetings.
Um, I'll go ahead and incorporate to shank a Jake on there. I always thought we were out of here.
I will.
I'm putting this bottom box. And we had to screw that. You should write somebody in red.